Today is Friday, November 21st, 2025, and this is a budget work session with Lorraine County Sheriff.
Morning Sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners.
Thanks for coming in.
Is it deputy or major?
I am chief.
Chief.
Chief deputy. There you go.
Yes, sir.
Casey was talking to me yesterday about some of the things that were going on with the previous sheriff. And in my years, the four years I was here prior to this board, I could never really get numbers that we were ever comfortable with. Because what he would do is he'd present a budget and then come back for allocations from work, pretty much, right? And then what would happen is he would load up road patrol, is my understanding, to make it look like he was funding it. But then would do internal moves and put them back into administration for his staffing. And road patrol would then suffer. Was that about right?
That is, that was the trend that we've seen. The budget ask for road patrol would be higher by the end of the year, the spend. The roles were typically reversed, so they would transfer funds from the road patrol.
I don't know if you guys saw that when you got here.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, I've gone over multiple budgets to take a look and see where we were. And one of the first things that the sheriff wanted was as many bodies on the road as he could have. Because responding to calls all the way across the county from one end to the other and only having three people to do so. You have one domestic on one end of the county and you have no one for another on the other. And that is an absolutely dangerous situation. And that's not even being proactive. This is, we're talking response. You can't do it with that many people. So he did cut all of those extra administrative duties, jobs, and put them all back onto the road. And no one has complained. I think they're actually very pleased with that. And those jobs were then turned around and allocated over to civilians as they should have been in the first place. It wasn't necessary to have a sworn officer to handle those. So we have gotten a good amount of deputies, but we were still short. The jail was tremendously short when we started, whether it was morale, lack of preparation for retirements, or et cetera. But we have brought it up to full staff by the end of this year. And then when we had a discussion earlier in this year, I believe during a work session Casey and I did. I looked at the budget for the following year and knowing that we all needed to tighten our belts. I made certain to keep it just at the staffing we have now. So that that extra for the transport team was then redirected and cut out. So I made certain that we kept it within the means, just as a full-staffed agency, and cut out any fluff. So that's what you will see in front of you, both of them. I can tell you that this year's budget, Casey I'm sure can back me up with numbers. We ended up, because of short staffing from the day we walked in the door, with almost 1.4 million in overtime. You will not see that ever again because of the staffing increase now.
No, but the offset to that will be the regular time for the people that we worked overtime to replace.
That's correct, but you did have burnout enough that people were quitting. Because they were forced and mandated on overtime to take care of prisoners, et cetera. And that really, a million of that, 1,400,000 was out of the jail. And you won't see that again because now you have full staffing. And if I looked at the benefits and how much you paid out, you're right Commissioner. It is a here or there kind of thing. Am I paying more benefits than I would in overtime? But at some point, that tipping point is really the morale and whether or not you're going to retain staff. And training for staff is expensive as well. So maintaining a good staffing amount is also a necessity. So that's where we're at right now.
We had that same issue at 911, so.
Yep, you understand.
We get it.
Yeah, and your numbers aren't really truly accurately because they weren't putting stuff in and coming back for the budget. It doesn't truly, it makes your numbers kind of inaccurate as far as the actual expenses.
That's correct. So when we sat down at the beginning of the year, Casey and I did in March. We had a discussion about the fact that the numbers that were left was $1,800,000 short of what he had staffed. We're not talking about adding any staff. It was 1,800,000. But I have not, to date, had to return and ask for anything, so we made it work. I adjusted some things from line items and cut spending and cut as many of the contracts that we had that were fluff. And went back and reevaluated every one of them. So you'll see that the numbers are realistic.
And I think the two macro issues for the commissioners are, you know, number one. We've added to the paperwork the special revenue funds.
Correct.
To make sure that, you know, that in the conversation is what expenses can we move to? To help alleviate some of that pressure on what we're short.
And I think Commissioner, if you take a look at that, at the beginning in February. At the beginning of February, actually, Casey sent me over the list of my special revenue funds and said, "You have X amount of dollars in these funds. Let's see what you can spend out of those to try and alleviate the burden on the general fund." And I have. I've moved employees to the CCW fund so that they are actually using the CCW money. There was, you know, almost $500,000 in there. So now we're using that to pay salaries for records, people who are processing CCW licenses and renewals, et cetera. So I'm trying to actually use those funds for what they're supposed to be. Obviously, I'm limited in the things that I can, but anything I can, trust me, we're making phone calls and asking questions and saying, "Is this possible?" And luckily Casey and Mike have been very good about helping me to navigate those waters. Because they're a little tricky. I want to make sure everything's within the law and within the fund allowances.
And the second area that we're looking at, and again, this is just low-hanging fruit.
Yes, sir.
But the second area is staffing levels. Because there was a trend with all the ARPA money floating through the treasury. There was this feeling that we could, you know, hire people without a lot of consideration of long-term.
Correct.
Okay, when ARPA's gone, what are we going to pay for? Who's going to pay for this? So, and you came in and of course, the whole thing was, you know, turned upside down. When you have a major shift, somebody that's been there over 20 years and somebody new coming in, there's a big change in that. So we've had a hard time getting our hands around those numbers. But the raw numbers of employees prior to COVID and the raw numbers today will be at issue. And if they're extraordinarily high, that's an issue for us. But if they're extraordinarily low, then we realize that you've taken some measures and so forth already, so.
Yeah, they were. And then if you look at it, I did look at the additional that we were going to hire. We had them in the pipeline and I put a stop to it in order to meet the request of the commissioners for us to then hold off on making certain that there was nobody then that would have to be, you know, possibly laid off at any point in the future. So those 15 corrections officers are held. I told them we're not going to be hiring at this point based on these needs.
And that's the correction officers for the jail?
Yes, correct. Transport team. So right now at 100 corrections officers, you are fully staffed.
Right.
And that would be meeting the minimal needs for the jail itself. But the additional 15 that we were going to hire to help with transports, et cetera. I've held off on that in order to make certain that I keep within some budget constraints that I'm certain that we have.
Well, we're hoping that, we're hoping as we continue planning for the new jail. We are hoping to have some economies there that we can help the situation with. Because we realize that part of the jail's staffing levels is providing top-notch safety in a building that wasn't really designed to be a jail.
Yes, sir. And that's why, where we're at today is the amount that you need right now to maintain. To keep, and liability-wise especially, to make certain that we have what we need to man that jail right now.
Commissioner Riddell, we worked with State Representative Kelly Dieter in regards to what was called House Bill 397. In regards to House Bill 397, that is monies that are received for the commissary account that inmates or their families use. In addition to that, that count is going to see a little bit less funding deposited into it this year due to an FCC ruling from the current, or actually I believe the past presidential administration has carried on with the FCC with this presidential administration. That fees collected by county jails across the country will no longer be able to be deposited under that FCC rule. So we see an anticipation of that. That has been balanced with us being in pair with other county jails and what their commissaries charge for items that the inmates utilize. And in addition to that, tablet use, things like that, that they get through there. So with that, House Bill 397 passed the House. It'll be going on to the Senate. And then if that passes, for the governor to have a signature. But with that, there is a salary of the Corrections Inspector General, which will be covered by the commissary account for that, that those monies will be used for. In addition to that, we received over $200,000 in grants for the opioid relief that was received from the state of Ohio for that grant. We will be reapplying for the application of that grant, which we were encouraged to because they found our program to be very positive. So there was two additional full-time employees that deal directly with substance abuse addiction for the jail as well. So therefore, those grantings, which is a continual grant, the encouragement to apply for those grants from the state, has been successful. And with the assistance of our state representatives too, we've been able to creatively find new funding sources and being able to make sure that we have those funds available through the state and how those commissary funds are spent.
And in addition to that, we applied for and received a grant to pay for one of our deputies who is a mental health autistic specialist. So he is now, that hire was then, the burden was taken off of the general fund and was paid for by a grant.
Casey, do we have a match in our paperwork? You know, we have special revenue funds which would include these grants. And I think the sheriff had, you know, probably a dozen of these different funds for different reasons. Do we have a match that we've been able to work out yet? You know, that what salaries come out of the general fund money and come out of the grants and special revenue? So that we can continue to whittle that down and understand how we get back to the number out of the general fund that we can handle.
Yeah, I'm not sure you have anything in front of you today, at least certainly not my paperwork. And I'm just breezing through here. I don't see that. I don't think we have the information here today. You know, similar to the domestic relations budget that we walked through, I mean, it's very complex. I mean, it's not just cut and dry, general fund and a simple special revenue budget. The sheriff office has many different special revenue funds. And their employees fall under, whether it be DTF, whether it be Northern Border, jail, I mean, you name it. There's a bunch, so.
Retiree hires you have. I mean, there's so many, and to just to.
Which we got that list in front of us.
You have a list of those. However, the reimbursement for SROs, the reimbursement for.
For the schools. Is that in here or no?
It is not, but it is a total of $758,000 a year that is reimbursed. So if you take it off the bottom of that number for salaries, that is money that is then given back. So none of that is listed in these.
Is that in there, Casey?
Yeah, so that would be under general fund revenue. That would probably be refunds, reimbursements, I'm getting.
Yes.
So the last, under general fund revenue, the last line is refund reimbursements. So I'm guessing that's where those are brought back into, I guess. Potentially it could be intergovernmental. I'm not sure exactly how those, as those funds are come in.
But you got that under jail though.
Where they deposit those. No, no, no.
No, no, there's other ones.
There's a general fund revenue.
The general fund revenue and refunds and reimbursements. It honestly is a very complex system. It's taken me about 10 months to figure out where that money comes from and goes to, as it comes in and goes out. But when I look at the ask, then I subtract those numbers and I can just tell you that looking over the SROs, the five of them. That salary amount is 758,000 for 2026. And that, then you also have New Russia. I mean, I can go through the list, but there are several that are reimbursed, but that's not listed. When you see this number, that's not subtracting that out of there. So just so you're aware of that. The pages that I gave you is just overall what we cost, not what we're bringing back. So.
Put this, ours up?
No, no, yeah, put ours up. We got three pages here. Let's get them up.
Well, I will say that, so the, and thank you for this. The documentation that Chief Deputy brought over, their figures, as we're going through, I'm working through and updating. So the spreadsheet that we have, don't take into account the updated figures that they brought over for us this morning, so. So I don't know if it makes sense to show what.
Let's not put it down, okay?
Well, that's what this file is?
Can I put ours on?
Nope.
Yes, sir. That's the file I brought you.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
I don't want to have misinformation out there. There's enough of that going on with the mega site, so. That's my dig.
So, I mean, I guess we could, we could.
I thought you liked that.
Commissioner, we could show what the sheriff's team brought over today if we wanted to see what their.
Absolutely.
Well, okay, so, okay. Yeah, because the numbers, what we looked at and the salaries that we're looking at is really a lot. And when people, when we're looking at the increases from your office, it's extremely excessive. And we got to figure out, you know, how do we work with all the other electeds? To make sure that you guys don't get nailed, okay? That's what we're trying to do.
So you look at, if you're looking at the, between 25 and, if I looked at 24 to 25's budget, you'd see a bigger difference. There's a lot of retiree hires that change from the regular deputies because they.
I'm looking at 2021, all the way up to 2024.
If you're, those before me.
You guys had nothing to do with that.
Yep, I was going to say before me, I can't give you much.
And that's the problem when you got, your approved budget went, like the spend in 24 was 6.6 million for personnel at the sheriff's office. Went to 9.2 for approved budget. I don't know what the actual, because we don't have the actual for this year. So then we have, that's why it's so, I don't want to say it's confusing. It's just that you have really, some department, some of the elected officials is like, "That's it." You know, you guys have three full pages.
I try to keep, I'm sorry, I'm just confusing. Okay, I was going to say, I try not to keep it too confusing.
What Casey did was take a look at the actual spend. That's what we're looking, okay, what was actually spent? And I don't know if, you know, when you get one elected official leaving, is he taking care of people? Which you guys had to pay that suffering for somebody, we debate all day whether he worked to earn that 80 grand or not, that he got. That cost you for this year. There's a lot of things like that that we don't know. Was there a lot of hires during COVID to take care of buddies? We don't know. You know, I'm glad you guys are in there crawling up the numbers. But at the end of the day, the ask is more than we can provide. So we are kind of using this as a way to say, "What else can you give us?" Like, and like what Casey was talking about in regards to some of your other revenue funds, like your criminal justice services. I'm sure you're handcuffed in what you can use that money for.
I am indeed, sir.
Even though you're sitting at 1.9 million.
But that is also going to DTF salaries and.
And that, that's what I mean. I don't want to look at, you know, you had a 301% increase up here in your employees, but that could be, that's not being counted.
And those were the old figures. Like I said, the adjustments that the chief had mentioned earlier about the road patrol versus employees. The new numbers that she has, that she's provided, reflect those changes.
And I think that's what these, the initial meetings we want is this kind of discussion to say, "Okay, you know, can we pull money out of this revenue account to offset the general?" What can we pull? Because every budget they've ever had here has always been, people have asked from the general fund. We kind of use it and say, "What do you have in your revenue accounts that we can use to mitigate that since people don't want?"
Which is one of the reasons that I went to, when I saw that, when we talked in March, I believe, that Casey and I sat down and I said, "The numbers that I was given will not match what you have right now in the jail." And one of the ways that I can change that and one of the ways I can fix that is by using the CCW fund for employees. Because I do have employees that are working, that's correct. So I have tapped into those special revenue funds in order to make certain that I was making up the difference for what was not allotted and was not planned for. Because apparently in the past, it was a regular thing to just come back and ask for more.
Oh, yeah.
And I have tried my darndest to not do that. So, and you know, obviously with assistance, Casey and Mike have been wonderful, helping us to navigate those waters to make certain things are moved from where they needed to be to cover all of our spends.
I like your presentation. We've been trying to be very conciliatory on the hospitalization issue because we believe it belongs in each department. But when we're making our comparisons, we're taking it out of 25 and comparing your request without it. And I'm pleased to see that your comparison has it in both places.
I know that that is the actual cost of my people, so.
Well, that's exactly right. And it shows support for the fact, you know, what we're doing.
And it is also something to think about as you're hiring. What is the real cost of someone when you hire? So that's also always in the back of my mind when we're making those decisions. Which is another reason that those 15 are.
We won't have any relief for you in 26 on that, but we have.
I understand.
We have very serious plans for 26 to produce, to produce some changes that'll help mitigate these huge increases in the hospitalization that go forward because they impact every budget.
Agreed.
And we're running at about twice the national average in increases in expenditures. And we're self-insured, so the reality is it's not bad management, it's us.
Got it.
Well, and I don't know about us, I think I would say the whole medical industry and the government.
Well, the national average is 6% inflation between 25 and 26 going forward. You know, we're running at 13%.
Well, yeah, and we got a Cadillac plan that we're looking at.
And I added that into the budget just to make certain that that was an actual number so that you have it in front of you.
I saw that. That was awesome.
One of the things is, Jack, you had mentioned that your prescription drug, you were going to the state.
Yes.
Are you getting pharmacy, as if you are a pharmacy, or are you guys?
Can I answer that?
Yeah, I know you've been dying to answer this.
I'm dying to answer that one.
Okay.
When I came in the doorway, the monthly cost for prescription drugs for the inmates was approximately 88,000 was an average. And there was 535,000, I believe that was allotted, which don't have to be a math genius to know, we're going to run that out real quick. And then our inspector general actually had some history and said, "Hey, take a look at this company" because we were looking at other options. The only other way to get it any cheaper than the $17,000 average we are now spending, take a look at that number and the difference. Which I'm pretty darn proud of, that's a great decrease in it, is to hire your own pharmacist. And that pharmacist then can also be the pharmacist for the county. But that is another story for another day.
Well, no, we're actually.
No, I'm actually digging into it right now.
Okay, good, because that is.
That's why I asked.
Is the cheapest way in order to obtain those drugs and medications for our inmates, which we are required to have. And a lot of them are the most expensive drugs and that.
And you guys handle narcotics then too.
That's correct. Yep, and withdrawal meds, HIV meds, all of those things are extremely expensive. We're talking $4,000 a dose. So when we can bring that cost down to $17,000 a month, that's a huge savings in the overall budget. Which is probably one of the big things that, even though we hit that mark at 535,000 already because of the first few months. By the time it could be implemented, it wasn't until July. That saved us from really coming back and saying, "Uh-oh," before the end of the year this year.
I'd like to work with you guys on it. I've been working on it for a little while, so.
I am happy to work with you.
I'd love to.
Because anything that will save the funds is happy, makes me happy.
So you actually have a pharmacy within the jail?
No, it's CorrectX, but we have medical staff that distributes that medication based on pharmacist.
You have all the software and everything for it?
Yes, sir.
That's why we have these meetings.
Well, it's important in particularly this budget because you've increased service levels.
Yes.
We have reduced funding. And I think a lot of the reason that we had a problem on Election Day was that people didn't really realize what we're doing. So we're hoping through these processes, as you answer the questions, people can say, "Oh, is that where that money comes from? Is that what it's used for?"
I honestly wish more residents would come and ask me those questions. I have no problem. It's all public record. I have no problem explaining to them what comes from what line item. You know, what we did to try and reduce that cost because people, you know, question that. And I don't have a problem telling them because I'm pretty darn proud of my staff and the fact that we've gone through each one of those contracts.
Yeah, well, I found out there's 322,000 people in Lorraine County.
I know. I don't want them all knocking on the door, but you know, if somebody had a question, I'm happy to ask. I'm happy to answer it.
Let me ask Casey, so let me ask you this question. Between the two different documents here. Our document is still fine because it's an actual spend every year, right?
Everything's fine up until the 2026 request.
So, okay, so the actual request is not fine?
Correct. Yeah, that's, those are the figures that are different, is the 2026 ask.
Okay, so if you don't mind, then if we could put the three pages up one at a time, Teresa? And let the public know that 2026 is going to be readjusted? Does that one, Elise?
Of our paperwork?
Yeah. And at least get that on there and let everybody know what we're looking at before we move on. So which one's that one? Does it say?
This is sheriff.
That says sheriff at the top?
The maybe the general fund.
Okay, so this is the general fund? Is that 250, like the idea that we might do from Visser's Row in the bottom right hand quarter? You got on that? Or is that, oh, that's from you?
Probably me.
Okay, forget it, nevermind.
Yep, ignore that.
Well, no, we're not going to ignore it. We'll talk about it. And the next one is the total sheriff general fund commitment? Is that what the next one? And then the next one's the sheriff. Oh, no.
And that's the revenue, I think, isn't it?
Jail. That's the, the one that's up there right now is the special rev, all the special revenue. And a combination, like the general fund contribution total, is that top part?
And then the next one is just the.
Would be just the jail.
So what's going to change, and you're going to come back to us, right Casey, after work?
I'm actually, I mean, we could probably talk through it a little bit. I've been making, working on making the updates real time here, so.
Okay. And then what we do is if we can get this all updated with the last column where it shows 25 to 26 change.
I will say there's, the changes are significant.
Right, okay, that's what I mean. I don't want people to think that we are going to. But this is kind of what we started looking at. So let me ask you this Casey, I mean, but it still doesn't, does it change the spend? Or did you put the numbers to the right-hand side based on the ask, like 92% increase? Is that based on the ask?
That's based on the ask, yeah. So all those figures will change as well.
Okay, so then.
And all the highlighted comments or.
So it'll be great that you guys can work together and get us tighter numbers and that'll be awesome. We're trying to find $11 million. That's all we're doing today, you know. I, I mean, well, I did, like I said, we did talk to, I did have a meeting last Thursday for the Visser's Row in regards to knowing that the sheriff's office is going to be short financially. And I know that due to the law, the new budget that was passed at the end of June. That they allowed the Visser's Row to, you can't do it with the bed tax now. But if we add a bed tax since June 30th. Then we can use that to offset security such as, I think, $40,000 that's spent on the fair and other expenses. Now, I know you get reimbursed from the fair for that. I don't know all of it or not. Do you, do you get reimbursed all of it or?
The only reimbursements that take place are for the deputies that work the actual events. So the concerts, beer tents, things like that.
But so we can also use it, because I know you're also talking to Rockin' on the River. I know you're talking to other local activities that are going on. And that's a decision I think this board will have to make as a commission. Because as a, the Visser's Row doesn't have the ability. They made a motion to support having people that visit our county help offset the cost. Because that's what that is. That's not us. That's not general fund. That's people that spend the night here, traveling through. And that tax, they allowed us this year, like the homestead exemption, they allowed the commissioners to actually use that money if we increase the bed tax to offset some of the expenses that are being incurred by your office. So I expect maybe in the next.
Not only the sheriff's office, but the municipal police departments and so forth.
Right, oh yeah, they can too, but I'm trying to take care of our sheriff.
Appreciate that.
And that begs the question, that what, we get reimbursed for the officers at the schools. What about, what about at county buildings and so forth? If you're over at the judges, at the Justice Center, is that money being, that's being paid by the sheriff's office? The question is, is it being reimbursed by anybody? So that we know, is it in your budget or is it in their budget, but not in both?
We do not see a reimbursement from the common police court for the court's security deputies.
Because they get a lot of revenue. We haven't talked to common police yet.
No, and you should also know that whenever we are reimbursed, it's just for the salary, not for the benefits. So when we're looking at saying, "Hey, we're putting on," and somebody's working for, let's say, as an SRO. They're paying the salary costs or any overtime related to that, but they're not paying the benefit costs.
Is that by past history or is that by statute or what?
That's by past history and the contract that was in place.
How long, how many contracts do you guys have outstanding on this?
We have five right now. Yep, so those are things to.
We need to look at that because they got the 31% hop in their real estate taxes.
The schools did.
So that's something for.
Claw a little of that back.
Well, we're going to claw back a lot already from them, so.
Hey, let's face it, it's, you know, if it's, if it's coming out of your general budget and it should be out of somebody else's. It's putting the burden on your bucket of money. So we got to look at those.
Well, when those contracts were initiated as well, there was nothing. Well, when those contracts were initiated as well, there was nothing in the line items or anything else when those contracts were, by the prior administration, given to the school districts. Those contracts will be expiring, and so therefore we have to renegotiate those contracts, so now is a good time, you know, to look at that, so.
I don't, I don't see any reason why they shouldn't be reimbursed at full cost, conceptually. I'm not talking about just grabbing more money, but conceptually, we're providing a service. And if our cost to provide that service is, is, you know, dollar, dollar X, we should be getting, we don't wanna get reimbursed at dollar Y, but we should be reimbursed at dollar X, not dollar X minus.
And for example, the job and family services contract.
Correct.
Has that in there with the benefits.
Oh, really?
Yes, we, we included that in this new contract.
And part of our job is to get, as we did with hospitalization, is to get those costs where they belong. So that there's more transparency, more clarity for, for, for normal people to understand. So that we don't get what Casey had to tell me when I got here three years ago, when I said, well, why is this over here? And he says, well, that's government accounting.
Government accounting is different, it is definitely different.
It's kinda like, I don't know, deficits and credits, and deficits and credits, and dollars are dollars. And I don't know why, you know, why we can't figure out to match the revenue to the expense, so that we know how to manage the place.
Well, even if we did, Commissioner, even if you did get the benefits reimbursed, there's always still going to be some cost to us, which is a benefit to the school district and rather than hiring their own security, because of training, because of, you know, equipment, all of those things. So even if they paid the hospitalization, the life insurance, the Medicare, what, the, what, whatnot, the percentage that comes out of every person's fringe benefits, there would still be some cost that we would absorb as a, as a unit. And that's natural in order to maintain them and the same training and have the same equipment, et cetera, that the rest of the sheriff's office does have.
Well, the line item for the cost of the employee, that actual cost, that's a net cost that employees is what we should be charging.
If, if you sat down to look at that, you, I would probably, between Casey and I, we'd probably pull our hair out by the end of the year.
Well, you do an average, I mean, obviously you have different wages, different levels, but the average cost of a deputy is X and.
We actually go a little more finite than that.
Yeah, we do, we, we do go a little more finite all the way down.
There's so much perks by using your office because of access to.
Correct.
Other officers, nine-one-one, everything, so it's like, that, that bet, that cost benefit, okay, let's just say that's the actual dollar amount cost. But the perks and the benefits of having that type of protection, and you know.
Training, everything.
Well, I'm just saying, there's, there's eighteen school districts and we're only in five, so.
Besides the fact that if they were to try and employ, let's just say, a security officer, they're not legally allowed to make an actual arrest on premise. They'd have to call to us anyway, so there, it's a, it's, you know, it's a relationship that works both directions.
Sure.
However, the cost does then fall back on us if we aren't asking them for those benefits in the future.
Don't forget, to be sure that there's school districts that are in the townships that are under the purview of the sheriff.
That is correct.
School districts that are in cities that are under the purview of the local police.
Right, right, right.
So you have local police providing the same service in other areas.
Hopefully.
But I, I, I know in talking to other people and sitting on other boards, in today's world, there's, there's a benefit. You, you might say, okay, we can hire a rent-a-cop and, and do this for less money. But you don't get the same quality of, of service and you don't get this quality of protection for liability. So at the end of the day, we've got a great product to sell and we shouldn't be ashamed to sell it at cost.
Yeah, that's the key word, cost, not at a loss.
Not at a loss.
Or profit, just that cost. When school, when school, when school is out, what happens to the SEL, I mean, do they, do you guys put them on patrol?
First of all, most of them aren't taking, they, by contract, they don't take vacation, they're not allowed any extra time off.
No, I'm talking about summertime.
No, I'm talking about during the summer, during the summer, they have to take their vacation then. So they couldn't take a week of vacation during, you know, October because they're in session and there's supposed to be their X amount of days.
What we do with them, well, the schools are in vacation, I have two school daughters, so I'm not talking, I have two school teachers, but.
Well, they have to attend a certain amount of.
Christmas and another week or two off at Easter.
They get a lot of time off, don't they?
Teachers work a hundred and eighty-eight days, that's it, so.
They're back on the road, and they supplement this, they supplement them, and they run some projects in the summertime that we don't obviously offer during the school year because there are kids out, so let's just say Safety Town, that would be one of those that they, they would be reassigned to.
Warrant service with special operations and.
They, they do supplement, try and catch up on their warrants that are, it's almost impossible to keep up with outside of that.
You have better weather to do it.
Yes.
Yep, I just wanna make sure they're being utilized, that's our, that's our question.
I, uh, nobody sits around.
Myself, I'd ra, I'd rather have the vacations that the school kids and the teachers have, because they come around all the nice holidays and, you know.
I, I was looking at one item here, you have equipment lease, it's gone up significantly from last year to this year, were you guys like under utilized?
Those are vehicles, so we started that program, and this is one of the things that Casey and I talked about when we sat down in March. The, the, the program is excellent, I, I have no complaints about Enterprise. It's been, it's been a very good negotiations with them and, and them providing us what we have been asking for. However, when you do lease, you have to, until you get to your max lease for the rotation, you're going to see that number jump. And that is where, and, and that's not, they provide it with lights and sirens, et cetera, but they don't provide it with a laptop or any of the things that are required, so you'll see that increase until we hit a max number at year four. And then that should stay pretty steady going forward.
Gotcha.
But that also then provides you with vehicles and you don't have to go and take a huge capital bite in buying new cars.
Well, that's why we, that's why we chose to go with the lease part of it is that.
It works.
Instead of every four years, here's a bill for two and a half million dollars for vehicles.
Yes.
Let's, let's lease those and let's make sure, end up with an annual cost instead of every five-year spike.
Well, I'll tell you, two and a half million would be a, a, a joy at, would you try, you'd be looking more like four or five.
Six forty-six.
Yes, yes, so, um, that's where that, that cost has jumped in. And luckily, last year, they had provided some money, um, we, we didn't receive the vehicles till June, which is fine. That was what we were planning on, but the cost they had for equipment for those vehicles that we have to put into them, those are reused as much as we can until they hit their life end. And that cost, I was able to then transfer over to cover this year's leases. So I was able to, that was one of the things that was not accounted for this year, even though they said they wanted the cars, they didn't account for the money that would go with those cars, so I have been able to, to kinda balance that out.
Now, do you provide security for the juvenile detention facility as well?
We do not.
You do not?
Thank you.
I'm good, thanks. I'm supposed to be in court at one o'clock, remember? And so you two voted for me to go.
Hey, you were late.
I remember volunteering on that. I've been there since the beginning, I should be the one.
I'm gonna enjoy that negotiation.
And you were late.
Oh, yeah, no, that's what happens when you don't show up.
And the other thing that's been nice about Enterprise too is that a lot of police departments experience this shortage. Like, for example, they'll say, we have no more of this type of vehicle, so then you're forced into buying something you normally would not have bought. Due to the fact is that there's an inventory shortage, tariffs, or whatever else is going on. Enterprise has been very accommodating, going down to more of a mid-sized SUV like the Durango that much of our fleet has now switched over to. And the Durango has been a very reliable vehicle to be able to use and not have to purchase things like Tahos and stuff like that to go with a larger vehicle. Because we've been stuck, because that's all.
That was.
Plus fuel economy and all that, too.
Right.
Yes.
Tires.
And, and honestly, therefore, a, a vehicle, when you're hitting one of these that are used twenty-four, you know, po, potentially, they're used all the time. They have more miles on them normally, but they have less breakdowns, knock on wood. Those Durangos have been much better equipment-wise and even, you're right, fuel economy as well.
Yeah. And, and I see that you guys are using Conversant, which is obviously very important to the county and keeping you guys secure.
Yes.
Well, I do wanna publicly thank you guys because you guys worked very well when we were breached.
Yep.
Out of the sixteen elected officials, fifteen of them worked very well together, and you guys are one of them. I appreciate, you know, some of our meetings that we would have, we're on Saturdays and Sundays, and I know the sheriff is there and you, I mean.
I'm always on the other end.
I know, I know, I, I just wanna say thank you. As we move forward though, we're looking at, you know, if you guys do have special computer accounts, how can we use that to mitigate the cost of Conversant? That's why, you know, Mike brought it up.
Yep.
I didn't see the Conversant on here, but that's what we're trying to do, is if you're allocating some money.
From a special revenue account, right?
For whatever towards the security and so forth, we're looking at shared services and, and it, it goes beyond just having Conversant into, you know, we wanna be able to coordinate the hardware, and obviously you folks have all kinds of special software.
I can tell you that.
We don't, we wanna be engaged in the software, because that, that takes a.
Yeah, we built a fort, that's what we did.
That's what we did.
Well, I can tell you, when I came here, there wasn't even matchsticks as a fort for our computer systems. And there was never even a budget that was set aside to have things on a regular rotation replacement because, and this is.
I'm gonna go back to what happened, though, when we did this four years ago, and we used, when the ARPA funds came in. In fact, the first day in office, we had, they, they came in and they said, um, here's a memo, and the memo's there, if people wanna read it. Says, I don't want, I want you to know that I have no responsibility for how wide open our county is. That was a guy who wanted, he said, I don't even know if I wanna do business, okay? We did, and then he gave us the quote, and we're like, we cannot afford it. So we had no money to do this, and then ARPA came in, we used that money, quite a bit of money to do it, because without that, we would have never been protected. And the problem was, only a couple elected officials decided to join us, including, you know, your previous administration. So I'm glad, when you guys came in, to join that protection, because it was, like you said, matchsticks.
It was matchsticks, and it was easily blown over.
Yeah.
So there was, um, there was a lot of deficit when it came to the computer, software programming, all of that. So we, we scaled down, um, even the amount of people we had there and said, let's work with the county. Um, so then that way I wasn't, we didn't have the salaries for somebody and, for things that were separate from what the county was doing when it came to computers and, and our software and, and being able to even communicate with each other.
And to the convergent point too, Commissioner Gallagher, we started this office off immediately under a level one sanction by Ohio leads that we failed our technology audit in August of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, the requirements that we were to implement, which convergent, finally, we did this with the email and the security and all that. We were finally able to submit that to leads to be able to get that out from August of twenty-four of the level one sanction that we were under. And that's what assisted with that as well. So with that, that goes hand in hand with communication between the prosecutor's office, nine-one-one, et cetera, in regards to siege of security, compliance policy, which the convergent product allows for all that to do, and this is for the first time, when we look at our email and communication systems and transmission of data and all that, this is the first time we've been in compliance.
And for those who are unaware, leads is the law enforcement automated data system that we cannot function without. We have to have that in order to run driver's license, care, uh, for officer safety, for warrants, et cetera. So all of that, having a sanction on you, they would have come back and they could have shut us down, and that would have been, that would have been horrendous. Devastating, correct, so we were unaware of the sanctions when we walked in the doorway. It wasn't until several months in that we even knew that they existed.
In April, they were ready to move us to level two.
Well, you, you, so your budget's really, it's, it's, it's been a mess.
It has been, yes.
Because you, you've got different avenues of hiding stuff, and then all of a sudden it comes in as extra money, extra revenue to the board of commissioners. So your accuracy is basically since you started in moving forward, and that's, that, that, that's something that has to be looked at, and I can see that.
We were actually questioning you guys as to how revenue accounts were coming in and not accounted for. And like the chief had said, it took ten months working with Casey to see exactly how the flow of revenue was.
Once you understand it, but at the time, and especially when we ta, started talking about, you asked for, back in July, for us to estimate revenue. I couldn't have, because I didn't even understand it at that point. But once, working with them over the, the course of the last several months, it makes it so much easier. Every once in a while, one of the girls will look at me and go, okay, hold on, that is, goes there, and, but it's okay because we have somebody on the other end of the phone who is more than willing to, to help us, and as we get more experience, that'll be easier.
That was the famous debate your, your predecessor had with the commissioners, that the, the money for the school.
Resource officers?
Resource officers. He, he took exception to the fact that we pulled it back into the general fund and not to his budget.
And.
We just have to know it's there.
Yeah, well, that's what's at the beginning of the year.
Your, your, your budget should have the annual salary for all those people.
Correct.
Then there's down here, it says revenue, that tells us that we'll get some revenue to offset that.
Correct.
Okay, but he thought he was entitled to the salary and the reimbursement.
And the revenue, so.
Yeah, it doesn't work that way.
Nope, that's not how it works.
And then secondly, you know, secondly, you know, he said, he said, why use those, those officers to cover summer vacation and all the rest of it? You know, I said, well, that's kinda like normal, if you mean, you know.
It is normal, and, and honestly, when we came in, you can see, you can easily see if he would have sat down and looked at the revenue side. He would have seen that that money comes in and goes back, but you were, you were loaned that money out of the general fund is how I put it.
We cash flow, is what we.
Correct, you were loaned it to, and it's being paid back to the general fund.
And we, even when the deputies are filling in in the summer, because they're not needed in school, their salary is still in the budget.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
So it shouldn't be that I need extra money to cover summer vacations, because salaries are salaries. Whether you're in building A, building B, or out on the road, you know, you're somewhere in that.
Understandable, yep.
We got a lot bigger problems than budget too. Um, after the sales tax failed, I started looking at other avenues, actually privatizing the jail. I started researching that, and right now, um, coming up with the numbers, very unofficial, is about twenty-seven million, if we were to privatize it. And right now, I, well, when I was doing this, we were at about twenty, now we're at twenty-four, so now I'm like, ugh, I don't wanna privatize the jail, once I saw that. I thought it'd be cheaper, so I actually spent my own time without telling these guys, or you, you know.
But you know what, it's the right thing to do.
At me because I know.
Oh, you have to look at all avenues, understandable, sure.
Everything, as far as I'm concerned, everything's on the table right now, and we gotta figure out a way to come up with the shortfall that we're dealing with. But all I've, you know, all I've heard this year from Casey and Mike is how great it's been working with you guys.
Appreciate it, they've been, they've been great partners.
How long you been here, Casey?
Not including tomorrow.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
Oh, coming up on eleven years.
Eleven years, he's never had that kind of relationship with that office, so I just, I know he would never say that, that's why I'm saying it. So, um, he says it's very refreshing, and it's nice to get numbers that we can actually make a decision on without wondering, you know. And that's, that's what these budget meetings are about, and it's really a working meeting, because now that we got, like, with what you guys gave us and what he has, we could probably get more numbers, and then we'll start going back and forth.
Closest we get to our, this year's budget, this current year's budget, the.
Well, the ask was ninety-seven million and all we got's eighty-six. And the auditor says we're bringing in eighty-two, so we're kinda, we, we think it's gonna be about eighty-six, so.
We just kinda predicted we would have flat revenue stream from twenty-five to twenty-six. So when we approved the twenty-five budget in twenty-four, we gave the admonition to everybody that, you know, things are flattening off here due, due to inflation. There's, you know, less disposable income, so we're, our sales tax is flat, because people aren't buying more stuff. They're buying less, but the price of the stuff is up.
Right.
And that result is that normally sales tax is an increased thing. When the economy's good, more purchases, more tax and more so forth, but we're not, we're not experiencing that. And we tried to tell everybody in twenty-four, when we passed the twenty-five budget, to prepare for twenty-six at the end of ARPA, that we won't have any magic money to fill the gaps, and that's, that's the world we find ourselves in today.
Now, we are talking operational money, though, that's what we're talking about.
For the, for the, for the sheriff and the prosecutor is that they didn't have any responsibility in those budgets that prior to now. So we have, we have to weigh what you're trying to do with your office and your, and your staff and so forth, to the money that we have. And we need to get a good handle on the, on the.
The real numbers, yeah.
Revenue, where it's coming in and evaluate what you brought in.
Understand.
But we need to try and get back to, find a way to get back to a certain level, you know, because that's what we have.
I understand, we also have, unfortunately, this year, we have negotiations with all our collective bargaining units, so.
That's why I looked at privatizing, sorry. But I don't think it's gonna happen.
No, but you know, you know what, it's, it's, you're doing, you're, you're doing what we're supposed to do, because we're watching out for the money. And I have no regrets with, with doing that in any, any area, um, to make sure that we're doing what's right for the taxpayers. And, you know, I think the services will go down, because I've heard about it in the past, if you privatized it. I've heard of people escaping in Youngstown area and stuff like that from the privatized jail, but.
That's what I looked at too, and they're like, yeah, there's issues there.
But it is something to look at as a, as a gauge.
Yeah.
You know, we're looking at the health insurance for that reason alone.
So I'm gonna throw a curveball at the sheriff, just because I know he doesn't like it. You know, the feds are paying two fifty a day for us, so, I know you don't like it, I mean, that's a lot of money, don't you think?
Commissioner, it's not that I don't like it. Commissioner, it's not that I don't like it, it's the current condition of our jail doesn't allow for a contract with the federal government.
Okay, thank you.
We wouldn't meet their, we would not meet their requirements.
Thank you.
Trust me, remember when I said I've looked at all avenues for revenue? That is one of them, quite honestly, and we don't meet their requirements for contract.
People do ask me.
I'm sure they do.
You know, you know, there is one question I had about that, you know, I, you know, I've looked at all the ja, many jails around the area. Is there an area of your facility that if, if another jail is built to, to house the rooms, is there an area of there that I didn't see, which I saw a lot of it, that would be renovatable to be hous, housing some people? Cause I know there was a couple additions on the current jail.
Well, it's funny you should say that, because something we will probably be presenting to all of you at another time is, in the current situation, moving trustee pods to other areas, we have no special needs for women, which we are supposed to be providing right now. Uh, we have the opioid, um, issue which is going on, which we have that grant and the counselors for that, that those inmates also have to be treated separately from other locations. So there's gonna be some reorganization in regards to what we can fill. If the new jail is built, and we have accommodations especially for special needs and detox and things like that.
That was my point.
We, we could still do that, and that's exactly what we tasked the corrections staff to do last week. It was after the failure of issue one, is to look at what we had to do to move forward to more efficiently use this space, especially if there was the possibility that we wouldn't build, you know, a new jail, you know, somehow. And to look at, is there something that can be resurrected? And due to the substance abuse issues that we have to deal with, due to the mental health issues that we have to deal with, they've actually begun that plan now, and they actually presented me a report yesterday.
And then in that event, so those people are currently in the current jail, in the event that they were out of the jail, they would open up beds to get your two hundred and fifty bucks a night.
Yeah, but the jail, yeah, but if the jail doesn't.
Still couldn't do it on the current jail.
Not, no.
Not on the current, I'm talking, you can carve out a section of the new area for that purpose, and the ones that you could move over to the other building. I, I'm just thinking.
I think you would blow the mind of the county administrator and the deputy administrator right now.
Well, I'm just thinking out loud and I'm asking the questions.
But I talked to Casey about this, and we got about, what, two point four million opioid money we could probably use?
Currently, correct.
This is the kinda stuff we're starting to look at. We're starting to look at other revenue or other money accounts that we can somehow use to offset the cost of the jail and maybe help us, you know, get to a point that the public will support it.
That would be an applicable utilization.
We've been approached by any number of service providers to the, to the addicted community in the mental, to, to use those monies, and we're still collecting those. We haven't dispensed any of them. And one of the reasons is that, you know, we understand that everybody would like to have more money for whatever they, they do.
Correct.
But we have, those, those, those dollars came to the county, and we have to upgrade what we're doing with the, with the jail. And so at the end of the day, we're holding those over, as, as the commissioner said, we're holding those over, because if we can spend those dollars that give us twenty years of good, as opposed to giving those dollars that give us twelve months of good.
Right.
We have to take that path.
And the other thing that we've done too, to help with that, is, is that we actually divided our medical and mental health staff a few months ago. And so with that, we have a director that oversees mental health now specifically. We have a director that oversees the regular medical directly. We just had our accreditation done, and as a matter of fact, the National Accreditation Board was very impressed with that and what we did. And looking, you know, Commissioner Gallagher, you've been out there, you know, very in-depth looking at the jail in regards to that, and to be able to get a report back from that from the National Accreditation Board, I was not only quite pleasantly surprised, but pleased with the work that the staff did to get to that point, and a lot of that had to do with splitting medical and mental health and making sure that we did that appropriately, so.
Well, in, in the, in the conversations about the floor plan and the, and the design of the new jail, which we're proceeding, because we hope that, that at some point, if we're shovel-ready and the state of Ohio decides to put some money into the, into facilities, which they have indicated in the next biennial budget, then we'll be ready to go. But in those conversations, the, the thing that struck me was that the quality of care and concern was not an issue, but the amount of staff that's devoted, because the building's not laid out that well, and the staff that has to be dedicated to, to those kinds of things, because it's all, it's all together, so. Another, you know, these are all pieces. Everybody thinks there's a silver bullet to solve the problem, but we can't deficit spend to where our bond reading goes, goes haywire, because if we wanna bond the jail, we need, we need the best bond rating possible, and then secondarily, we've gotta build the jail, because we can re, we can get some staff efficiencies out of this whole thing, you know, but it's all part of the same puzzle. There's, it's, they're, they're not individual units.
No, you affect one by doing the other, so.
Absolutely.
Yep, I agree. And we've talked about as many ways as we possibly can to make, i- i- in, increase the revenue on that side, and those were things that, you know, can always be revisited.
Yeah. Now, and that, that reminds me that some of the remedial, uh, repairs and stuff to the jail, were you funding those out of, out of, out of sheriff's office dollars?
Yes. So a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars this year had to go to just immediate, right now needs, like, there was no questions.
Did that come out of general fund or come out of, uh?
That came out of jail fund.
Jail fund.
It came out of the jail budget that was already allotted to me this year, so I didn't come back on an ask.
No, I know. I'm just saying that it came out of the budget from the general fund, though. None of these other special revenue accounts.
That's correct. There was nothing I could take it out of.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
But that is one of the reasons that the House bill that the sheriff was talking about is important, because that commissary money then can be used for things that were not initially allowed, um, and that's the, these kind of things is what, because they were so, they were really hand-strapped on what could be spent, and it was very specific wording, and that has allowed that to expand, so that those funds can actually be utilized in a better way to alleviate coming to the budget on some of the things, which would include the inspector general of the jail's salary.
And I do believe we came to the commissioners for the general fund for the air conditioning, it had to be.
Yeah.
Oh, that, that part of it, yes. Yes.
Yes, but everything else was, yeah, paid for out of the.
Well, we're trying hard not to spend, overspend. I'd rather devote those dollars to a new facility that solves all the problems instead of putting a Band-Aid on something that'll last a couple of years, so.
Right. Yeah, but believe me, I can attest to that. I've been to four facilities and in-depth. I don't ever wanna go into one again, unless I'm going this way and I have to. No, but it's, and he offered to let me do that.
You have any other questions for us?
I do not. Gentlemen, I appreciate your time.
You already have a relationship with Casey, obviously, so.
Absolutely.
If you get with us, how long do you think it'll take to, I guess, an updated report?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I'm pretty much, I mean, I've pretty much done, obviously, I wanna double-check a few things, but the spreadsheet, I have it pretty much updated, so really, it won't take me long.
Okay, I appreciate it, and then, um, yeah, now the fun begins, see what we got.
Yeah, I think you're gonna see.
We see what we have at the end, and who knows?
I think you're gonna see several adjustments that were made there that Casey plugged in, that I think we're gonna be a lot more closer to what you guys have in mind.
Okay, good. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Turn off the camera.
Okay, we're done.